Okay, so.
I'd like to call the Eastline Board of Education Special Meeting, Eastline-Salem Cooperative Meeting to order. Today is Monday, January 27, 2020, and it is 6:10. Do it all. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. If we could just go around the room, maybe, and introduce ourselves?
Van Norwood.
Salem.
Tanda Yura.
My little treasure.
Joe Nofield, Superintendent.
Candace Carlson, Acting Chair.
Jeff New, Eastline Superintendent.
Jane Bar Shilburn, Acting Secretary.
Eric Fowman.
Lee Janakis.
John Clonius.
Kixteal.
Marianna Stephens.
Welcome, everybody. If there's anybody here from the public that would like to stand up and have any comments? We'll move to the approval of minutes. The Cooperative Committee meeting minutes from January 28, 2019. Okay. Do you want to go back to it?
Sure.
Hi? You have to. That's good. Oh, that's the business manager.
Yeah.
Okay. So then we'll just move down to the reconciliation of Salem tuition rates for 2019, 2020?
Sure. So we have one new board member here, so I'm just going to quickly go over. I'm not sure if you guys have any new board members, but I just would, oh, so I'm just going to go over, if you don't already know, just quickly, and if you have any questions, let me know. But basically, this reconciliation is, we are reconciling the tuition that was calculated for 2018-19 two years ago. We're always about two years behind on the reconciliation. As you'll see what you have tonight, the 2018 reconciled tuition will then be the basis for what is the tuition that we charge for 2021. So, and then next year, I'll reconcile 1920 tuition, and that, as I go further, you'll see sometimes there's an overpayment and we owe you guys money, or sometimes there's an underpayment and Salem will owe us money. And that's always tacked on next year's bill so that you guys have a basis for budgeting, so you're not guessing as to what your budgeted amount will be for tuition.
By how many students and then special ed?
So it is. I'm going to go over the reconciliation process in depth, but I just wanted everyone to understand that it's two years, we're basically looking at two, the tuition is always about two years behind because we can't really, again, for 2021 that we're looking at right now, we don't know what those expenses will be. So we use the basis of our audited 18-19 numbers, and then we, per the agreement, it's 2.5% a year that we increase. So you'll see on one of the sheets, you'll see 5%. That doesn't mean 5% for one year. It's 2.5% because we have 1920 that we're in right now, and then 2021. So that's why you see the 5%. So I'm going to go over the reconciliation, and then if there's any questions on it, you know, please stop me. All right. So the first page that you see is what is the total education cost. That is pulled from what is now called the EFS. It's a report that we file each year with the state of Connecticut, and from that number, that represents our total education cost. And all the backup was provided. Kim obviously gets it. She reviews it. She will check it for errors, like, for example, this year, I added our transportation instead of deducting it. So it's good to have a second set of eyes. So from that total cost, I reduce it by the special education cost, which you'll see at the bottom is a separate calculation. So we just come down to what our regular education expenditures are for the district as a whole, and then I take that and multiply that by the percentage that represents the high school, and that's based on enrollment and their supporting documentation. So our percentage of expenditures for the high school is 37.79, so it's about $14 million in expenses for regular education. And then I divide that by the enrolled students in the high school, which comes from, again, a state reporting. So it's, I'm not just arbitrarily using any number. It comes from PSIS, which is a report that we file every year as of October 1, and that's the date. I use October 1 every year. So that comes to a per pupil cost, and then from that, I reduce the per pupil expenditure for transportation because Salem pays for their own transportation, so that obviously is not included in the cost that you pay. And then that comes down to what I'm calculating for regular per pupil expenditures for a high school student. And then there's a surcharge, which is, again, per the agreement. It's, I'm not sure where it started, but each year, we add a dollar. So it's at 7350 for 18-19. So the basis for regular education tuition is $13,288 per student for regular ed. And then the second half is the special education calculation. So again, based on the agreement, and I provide all the supporting documentation to Kim, we have what's allowed for salaries for special education for district-wide, and then we have specific special education expenditures that are high school-related. Again, I'm dividing by the per pupil, by the percentage, the number of special ed students within the high school to come up with our special education rate, and then that special education rate is added to the regular ed rate to come up with our special ed tuition. And again, we add the 7350 to that as well. So I don't know if anyone has any questions on this first sheet? Sure.
Just for, back up on the base tuition rate, regular education, item number four, the percentage of high school students enrolled in district, 37.79, is that as of what?
That's as of the October 1, 2000, October 1, hold on, it's back here, 2000.
The 2018, 2019.
2018, 2018. I always get confused with the dates. October 1, 2018. Yeah, it's page six of the document, six of seven.
And then total education costs, the education communal system district level function object report?
Yep. So I don't know if they got a copy of that. I gave a, and I can certainly forward it to you. I should have added it in here, but it was provided to Kim. So that comes from the final report that I filed with the state of Connecticut.
Right. So what that does, so that basically breaks down the makeup of the $49.50.
Correct.
And, okay, very good.
Yep.
So the way person to look at it, okay, this is the function, this is the activity, this is the material, this is the expense.
Yep, yep, yep.
So then, the only other question I had on this one, or anyone else who jumped in, was, so the co-op agreement says it's 2.5% per year increase, right?
Yes, yep.
Now, Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, but is what we figured out back at home, is it that next year's enrollment or cost per student is a function of tuition? Is it going up 6%?
No, no, not this part that she's talking about.
Not the reconciliation, right?
Right, right. If I'm saying, like, it's 6% or whatever those numbers were, that would be what the, what the, per the reconciliation, what the tuition will be for 2021 versus what we are actually paying for this year. That's, those are the numbers that I gave you.
Right, and?
And, but that has not, but that doesn't really.
What's the enrollment?
So you just wanted, so, in 13, 288, 20?
Yes.
Just for, so I understand. What are, are we using that number in next year's planning?
Nope. When she gets to the second page, you'll see where she gets, where we get the number for next year's planning.
I guess, and I'm probably asking the wrong questions, but I'm just trying to make sure I understand, is if we think that it's going to be a 6% upper year-over-year, and our co-op agreement factors in 2.5%, if we're to be forward-looking, does that indicate that we're going to be underpaying?
No, 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 because even the rate that we're paying this year isn't necessarily, it's just an estimated rate. It's two years ago plus 5%. It's not necessarily what their rate is, and we won't know that until next summer or next fall when she does the same calculation for 1920. Yeah.
So, and I don't.
Is there anybody else that has any questions, or do you go?
Oh, I didn't know if anyone had questions on the first. No, okay. So the second page is the 18-19 reconciled tuition rate, so, which carries over from the front. Again, I'm adding 5%. So then that comes up on the top half as the regular ed tuition. So that's $13,875.44 for 2021, and for the special education, it is $29,692.85. That is simply a 5% factor increase over the reconciled rate from the first page.
Those are our numbers that we're using for planning purposes for next year. Times are expected quantity of students in each category.
Correct.
Page three is just a breakdown of how I came up with the $1,930,000 that you see on line 18 of the first page. It is a breakdown of our special education staff at the high school. So I'm just showing that so that you guys can see the backup and see how I came up with that number. It's a fairly large number, so I thought it would be helpful for you guys to see how I'm coming up with it. Obviously, I'm just using initials. I don't want to put people's names in there, but again, if anyone has any questions on that page. The page four of seven is, per the agreement, we're allowed to charge our district-wide special ed supplies, and then that's reduced by 15%, and that comes to the, that comes to the front of the page, so you can just see where I'm getting that information. And again, to Kim, I did provide the backup from our general ledger showing where I got all that information. And page five of seven is where the reconciliation of this year's rate, so, or 18-19. So in 18-19, we billed you a total of $1,916,430 for regular ed, and for special ed, we billed you $789,097. Based on what I reconciled, we should have billed you the number in the last two columns, so when you come down to the bottom, you have an, overpaid $30,834 for regular ed and $20,747 for special ed. So what, that $51,000 will be divided over 10 payments, and that will be deducted from what you have, what you're going to pay us next year. So last year's overpayment was, I think, $121 or $161? Yeah, so last year's overpayment was about $161,000. So that, again, this year is divided over 10 months, and it reduces what you pay us each month by $16,000 and change.
So, so the end of last year was an eventful time for some of us. So the best that we've been able to understand it and then hopefully possibly describe it has been, when those costs that were billed from Eastline to Salem, historically, were those rolled into future years' reconciliation?
So from what I can tell, so that's why I think you had that, you overpaid. When I did the reconciliation, to me, it was only fair that we would be billing you for the, you know, the special ed teachers, the generalized, if you will, special ed population, and then any paraprofessional that works with all special education students, regardless of where they're from. And then there's our one-to-ones for both our students and your students. I did not include in that reconciliation any of our one-to-one paraprofessionals because I didn't think it's fair that you should be paying for our paraprofessionals. So that's when I, so that's why I think we had, I billed it because I, in my mind, financially, it would make sense that you would want to just pay that as you went along versus having it included in a reconciliation where it would be included in a base cost, because sometimes we probably have more students that are one-to-one than Salem would, so it wouldn't be beneficial. So that's, I think, where that came into play.
Yeah. I think, just so, just so you know, some of the questions that, at least that I'm trying to get my mind wrapped around, what's the, what's the forward-looking indicators, right? And what are the things that drive the cost and the behaviors of the trend over time? And the reason is, and even, you did a real good job putting the tuition reconciliation history together, but before last year, the last time Salem had an overpayment wasn't the '08, '09 school year. So we understand population quantities change, but other than that, what else is there that drives it? So what we're trying to do is just understand that. For example, so, Jeff, I'm not even sure, I know you presented the Eastline budget request for 2021. I don't know what it is, but we've been working on that same drill, and the portion that is Eastline and out of district in Eastline, I think, is like 6.5% upward of our entire, and for Salem, that's very large. So what we're trying to do is just make sure we understand what the drivers are of those types of costs.
Okay. So I can speak to the drivers here.
Sure.
I don't know if there's any other drivers that would impact Salem, but for here, what happens is, and part of the reason why you had the overpayment of 161, because I did go back to look, is the enrollment. So when the initial reconciliation was done, the enrollment was smaller, so obviously, the per pupil expenditure was larger. So then, when we actually did the reconciliation, our enrollment was larger. So obviously, that's spread out, same costs pretty much spread out over more students. It drives down your per pupil expenditure. So that, I think, is really one of the key factors, is the enrollment. And again, depending on what is going on in the special education field, whether we have, I mean, staff as far, and Kim is hearing, can speak more to it. I mean, I don't know that this year, we have additional, an additional social worker, I believe, but I think our staff is pretty much staying the same. And I think with having the paraprofessionals being billed one-to-ones separately the way it is, barring anything extraordinary in our enrollment, or something happens where we perhaps need to bring in additional staff, I'm hoping that we're going to get to a number that, because I think 51,000, isn't that, it's pretty good when we're, you know, two years.
Do you, so, do you have, so on the first page, 107, the base tuition rate?
Yep.
The total education cost, that $49.50 number?
Yep.
Do you have that data of that, what that is over, say, the last five, six years?
Sure.
Because the way I could at least understand to describe the formula, that's a significant factor in determining that. So if that number's changing by a good percentage, that just flows through the rest of this?
Sure. And I can tell you that when the reconciliation was done for 18-19 two years ago, when, to determine the rate for 18-19, it was based on 1,056 students, and now we have 1,018. So, and the expense was a little higher. So the expense was $14,232,400. I didn't look at what the total tuition cost was, but for the high schools, $14,200,000, and it was a significantly higher amount. So that brought the cost down versus, so it's, this is 1,018, so it's a little less. But I can get you five, you want five years?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. And do you want, I mean, I can somewhat easily put together, like, just a chart, five years, and kind of show the same somewhat information. Do you want that?
Yeah, that would be extremely helpful. So what, so you've already provided to Kim what the makeup of the total education cost is.
Yes.
So what I'll need to do is I'll go through that, just so I have an understanding of it. Is it safe to assume that the bucketization of all those things, that's the same over those five years of data?
We, I, I don't want to say that, because we've changed how we report. It used to be an EDO-1 report, which was different than the EFS, which, this is the second year. So fiscal year 18 was EFS, and fiscal year 19 was through the EFS system. Prior to that, it's been the EDO-1. So I can get you, I think, what would equate to this number, but as far as.
Do you have the breakdown, what went to the EDO-1?
Yeah, so I'd have to, I will take a look.
The breakdown, oh, I've got a copy of their EDO-1 from a couple of years back.
Yeah, what I'd be looking to do is just do a comparison of what the, what. Yeah, what I'd be looking to do is just do a comparison of what the, what contents and what made up the cost from the EDO one and compare that to what it is now. So that way I can understand what the differences are if there are.
All right.
Okay, does anybody have any other questions? No? Okay, all right. We're going to talk about the proposed Salem tuition rates for students attending East Line High School for two thousand and twenty-one.
Yes, that's, that's the, on page two. Those are the two briefs, the two thousand and twenty-one proposed tuition rate. I know we went over that.
All right. Now, does anybody have any questions?
They've overran it, but I don't know if they can. Because you don't have a forum.
Yeah, we can still take any action, yeah, so it's just for a review.
Right, so right now, we're just reviewing everything because we're just, we're unable to take any action. So how about we talk about appendix C, about the right of that?
Yes.
Do you guys have a copy of that?
Yeah, I'm sure this was readily discussed. The reason for this, yeah, exactly, in the last year there, in this case, with the additional payments for the one-to-one. It wasn't in reconciliation, and we built separately, and that's where the confusion was. Hence, we kind of clarified more in appendix C as to some of the rationales where we would be requiring additional services.
And that's all the writing in the red?
Exactly, those are the changes, yeah.
So really, it's just replacing the existing appendix with this, right?
Yes, and I know at our board level, we had reviewed this last year, and I think you did the same, right?
Did you, in your board meetings, did you guys do anything in terms of taking action on this language at all?
I have to go back and check. I know we reviewed it, but I don't know if we took specific action. I think it was just a review, yeah.
Because I think, I thought, I thought we did take action. I'll pull them in, it's when we, we reviewed it and we looked at it.
Because it's part of the cooperative agreement, though, we would have waited for this meeting if we were going to take action, but.
So it still has the existing.
Exact, okay.
Right, so this is just to replace it.
Yeah.
And normally, what we would do is then take action on it and then do it, so. So if we could just move down to the East Line Public Schools Superintendent's Proposed Budget for two thousand and twenty-one. Sam's not coming. Pardon me?
Not coming.
Sam's not coming. Who do you think is coming?
Sam.
Oh, no, he said he told you he's not coming.
Trying to coerce one more member.
No worries. No worries.
Drive fast.
Well, it's tough, yeah, because we're going to have to come back, yeah, but that's okay.
That's all right.
We welcome it, all right.
Tomorrow?
I don't have tomorrow's number. All right.
Okay, so I can give a quick update on the East Line proposed budget for next year. So we had come forth, I had presented to the Board of Ed, a, we kind of split up our budget this year. We had an operating budget increase over the current fiscal year, and then we had a technology increase because we were finding the need to really harness and come in with some, two sides of the coin with technology. Infrastructure improvements at our middle school, our high school and central office, and then a mobile learning device number increase in those to get us back up to speed and on a cycle. Like currently, right now, East Line, we don't have one-to-one, as you probably are aware. We don't have one-to-one devices for kids. We're trying to get to, you know, a point of having that. And I think at Salem, you do, right, Joe, you mentioned?
Yes.
Yeah, so, and most other districts have that. So we're trying to catch ourselves up, number one, and we're also trying to get our infrastructure where it needs to be to be able to run all of those, you know, devices when we get there. Through our elementary building school projects, those took care of the infrastructures and some of the mobile learning at that level. So our middle school, high school and central office, where we have our Coastal Connections program now, is what we're looking at. So our operating budget, I had presented a four point two-six percent increase over the current fiscal year. And the technology, which was separate, was a one point eight-nine percent increase, which we're looking to do for the acquisition plan downtown through capital improvement.
So your operating budget north of four percent increase.
Yes.
But you separate out technology?
We separate technology, and technology would be through capital, through CIP.
So do you, have you always done it that way?
No, no, we've never had this large of a technology request, so we didn't put it in the operating budget because typically, we go through the acquisition program downtown for some of our technology needs, about, it equates like about two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars a year. We took that number, we upped it to nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
So when you present it to your Board of Finance, is that bucketed under, how do they?
That's bucketed under capital.
So they put it, so, okay, so in Salem, we have our ten-year capital.
Yep.
So it's very similar, so they took, so basically, it's, they put it out of the education budget, put it in their capital.
Yeah, it will be under our acquisition plan under capital.
And is that a one-year thing, or is that going to be the way it's going to be going forward?
Well, it's a one-year piece right now, and then we'll see where it settles back to to get us on a cycle. We might, every year, we traditionally ask for about two hundred and twenty-six thousand roughly. It might be a little bit higher moving forward to keep ourselves on that cycle of mobile learning. Infrastructure will be taken care of for the years ahead.
So is that, so is that for, I would say, I want to say capital improvement, but for like when you have to refresh technology? Are you going to utilize that account and that?
Exactly, that will be part, yep, that acquisition program will be part of our continued refresh of devices every four or five years. Exactly, getting us on a cycle. So we have to get our, but we need to catch ourselves up right now. That's why the one-time cost of the nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand or the one point eight-nine percent increase is in that capital line item, so. But I'll pause there because I presented a four point two-six, but the Board of Ed had some great conversation about some additional needs that we feel we have in district. I won't go through them all, but most particularly is at the elementary level. Class sizes are higher than where we feel they should be right now. So we are proposing adding in two additional kindergarten teachers next year, which is not in our proposed, my proposed budget, and two additional first-grade teachers, four additional teachers next year. So we don't have a final percent increase right now, but it is going to be north of.
Four point two something.
It's going to, yeah, it's going to be higher.
So what was the dollar figure for the technology?
Nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand roughly.
And if you were, if you didn't separate it out, if you rolled it into the operating budget, what would your?
Four point two-six plus one point eight-nine, which is like a, what, six point one-five.
So that's, so the percentage was a percentage of the education budget? That's where you came up with it? So the nine hundred K one point eight was a one point eight of your education budget?
If you equated it out that way, yeah, exactly, before we separated the two out, yeah, yes.
So if apples, well, if I were to do an apples-to-apples, you're north of six right now?
Um, yes, yeah, yeah. But really publicly keeping those two, or those are two separate, yeah, operating and capital sort of thing. That's how we're trying to keep consistent on presenting it. But with the additional staff that we've talked about, there's some other components. Math coaches, we're trying to incorporate in, a social worker at the high school level, a BCBA district-wide, and then also potentially our global language program. We have not had that this year. We cut it at the elementary level. We're looking to maybe incorporate that back in next year. So all of that adds up, and that's the number we're going to be bringing forward to the Board of Ed next Monday night to have some final discussion, and then we'll have a final operating budget percent increase. The technology will stay the same, the one point eight-nine.
So now, just out of curiosity, the way that you factor the technology cost, do you break that out on the high school level, the middle school, the elementary, or is it just district?
No, we've broken that out, high school, middle school, elementary, so we have total costs for both infrastructure and total costs for mobile learning device increases. Yes, they're all separate. We have those numbers too, if you, they're in some of our PowerPoint slides, yeah. So, so that's kind of where we're sitting. So I don't, we don't have a overall final percent increase that's been presented. We're going to discuss it more next Monday night, and then the Board of Ed will kind of land on what that, they want that percent to be, and then we'll take it from there.
And when, from a schedule perspective, when do you have to finalize it with your board before it goes to the Board of Finance?
We hope to finalize on February tenth, the following Monday, with a public hearing that evening. So next Monday night, February third, would be the kind of final deliberations, and then public hearing on the tenth with board adoption on the tenth after the public hearing. And then we're still waiting to hear from the town when they want us to be coming down. We haven't gotten those dates yet.
So what is the, so just out of curiosity, I apologize for this question, but the public hearing that you're going to have, what, how could that impact your budget before you present it to the Board of Finance? They could, it's the same thing as if it's the whole rolled up?
Basically, the same thing, yeah. We could have public members that have come in, and in years past, we really haven't had many. More parents have been in support of the budget before it goes down to the Board of Finance. But some people could come in, speak in opposition to it, the Board of Ed could deliberate on that, and then decide to either lower it or raise it, or, yeah, so.
All right, so that's, so it's equivalent with the entire budget, it's just the subsection just for education. Minus, are you, and for that entire process, you're separating out the entire technology pieces?
Separate completely out, yes. We're going all capital improvement with that and through the acquisition, five-year acquisition plan.
And from a schedule perspective on that, did you have to engage with your Board of Finance before now to be able to agree that that's going to be separate out and put on your capital?
Not yet. We've engaged with the first selectman and the town business finance director to talk about, okay, is this doable? It absolutely is. There's really no additional cost, you know, to the town because we're paying it back ourselves through our operating budget on a yearly basis. So that's really the message to the Board of Finance, that this isn't going to cost you any more money. It's us bonding and paying it back over a five-year or longer period of time. Correct, Mariana? I mean, that's basically.
So doing it through that mechanism allows you to fund it that way?
Exactly.
Okay, so that's the benefit for doing separation.
Exactly, yes, to have a one-time big purchase, that's the best way we found that we were recommending that we do it. Yeah, so we'll see if it comes to fruition.
And when we had the board workshops too for the budget, we had a couple of visitors from the Board of Finance, so they are kind of abreast of it.
That's true, they heard.
They listened, yeah.
Good point, Candace, yeah, thank you. We had two budget workshops where we had some discussions around that, and Board of Finance members joined us for those.
And did they interact with you while you're having the conversation?
They did some, yeah.
They listen, they ask questions, sure.
Yeah.
It's really turned out to be a really great collaborative doing that, so just FYI.
Very nice.
Yeah.
So that's where we're at right now.
Does anybody have any questions?
What are your kindergarten and first grade class sizes?
Too high. Right now, Jen, we're sitting, Nyanix Center, we have the three elementary schools. Nyanix Center was the only one at the very start of this year, we added a kindergarten teacher because those numbers were even higher than Lily Behanes and Flanders at the start of this year. We offered and went and talked with the staff, the teachers at both Flanders and Lily Behanes, and the school year had already started. They decided, rather than adding two additional teachers to make it three, we added some paraprofessional support. But the numbers are sitting right around twenty, twenty-one right now in those two schools, which is well above our recommended range of fifteen to eighteen. So in Nyanix Center, we're sitting at fifteen, sixteen with the three teachers. So that's where we're at right now, yeah, so. But we don't want that group now at twenty-one, twenty, to go on to first grade with those same high numbers. Hence, the Board of Ed's recommendation to potentially put in two first-grade teachers for next year and two kindergarten teachers as well, not knowing what our numbers are going to be kindergarten-wise next year. So it's a gamble. We gambled this year, and we lost. I lost, basically. In hindsight, we should have added them in, but we didn't, you know, earlier in the summer, we did gamble, so.
Having a microphone issue. They're all, they're all in the yellow.
I see one in the red here.
The yellow or the red, we're in trouble over here.
So that's where our numbers are. I hear yours are fairly high as well, I think, right?
They're higher than that.
Yeah, so we've gotten a lot of pushback from the community and parents on those numbers, and, you know, the board has been very responsive to that, and that's our top priority moving into next year to keep those class sizes lower.
How's your trajectory for ECS funding this year going to be?
Stable this year, but then it goes down, yeah, it starts to go down.
So when you say stable, it's going to be the same going, this year going forward as it was last year?
Yeah, basically the same. I don't think. Yeah, it's rough, just under seven million, yeah. But over the next, you know, ten years or so, it's supposed to decline.
You will, yeah, when they make up the next annual budget.
True, I mean, the formula's going to, yeah, probably going to change again, so.
I think so. We're projecting, you know, north of a hundred and twenty K reduction to ECS funding.
Yeah, because that doesn't help.
From last year.
Yeah, so.
Our Board of Finance is very aware of that.
I'm sure.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, if we don't have any more questions for Jeff? All right, we're going to move on to Joe. We're going to listen to the Salem Superintendent's Proposed Budget for two thousand and twenty-one.
Jeff got to hear at the superintendent's meeting at Lauren before Kim and Mariana had a meeting that I was going to bring forth the largest increase I had ever brought forward in seventeen years of bringing forward budgets, and that was at fourteen percent.
Okay.
But then, those two young ladies had a meeting, and they adjusted reconciliation. That helped quite a bit.
Good.
After we took, after we removed two hundred and two thousand dollars from the superintendent's budget, we're at eight point three-three, is that correct, Kim?
We're at eight point three-three now after the adjustment.
After the adjustment or reconciliation and removal. Half of that removal is technology. So tomorrow night, we have a budget subcommittee meeting, and we'll be talking about, how do we manage that, what do we do about that? Because it would not be good for us not to fund technology in any way. But without tech, without any replacement technology in the budget, and without a few things, we're at an eight point three-three percent increase.
All right.
So out-of-district placements are driving that cost. We had five families move into Salem since last year's budget. Children in outplacement, and our director has visited all five and at the moment is saying they're appropriately placed. That's about a million, right? Our outplacement budget's about a million, I believe, with the, all of the twelve students that are outplaced.
The overall outplacement, why it's just north of a million.
Yeah, so that's a tenth of our budget. So that's very high, so we've got some work to do. The parents have come out in support. We have two new teachers in the budget. We have a teacher for first grade because we have three kindergarten sections this year. And again, like you said, we would like to, you know, move that additional teacher forward.
Yeah.
And we did not, we were not successful in adding a third teacher to third grade this year. That cohort had three teachers in kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and then we were unable to fund that, but we're asking for fourth grade. We're at fifty-two in third grade now? Fifty-one, fifty-two students in the third grade, second.
It's challenging when you get down with two or three staff members. Seven, I think, really low on it.
And NSDEC last year had said we were growing pretty steadily at about fifteen students a year. And I think we're twenty students over where we were on October first. We're four-twenty. So we're, you know, we're, we are growing.
We're growing, yeah, yeah. All right. Does anybody have any questions? I think Jamie has a question for you.
What were your kindergarten numbers this year? You said they were high, but.
It was fifty-two kids in three sections in kindergarten this year. And three.
Fifty-two, okay. I would just like to tell you, just a shout out to your Salem parents and PTAs because they are really very supportive of your budget. They're really a great group of people, so it means everything. If there's no more questions, we're going to move on to the Salem food service. And I'm very, I can't wait to hear how this is going.
We think on our end, pretty good. We've gotten some good reports from Chris Urban, our food service director, and I kind of leave it up, turn it over to you. You're seeing and hearing more of it, but Chris is keeping us in the loop.
I'll talk about it from our end, and then if you want to talk about from the parent end. But no, from an operational, we're incredibly pleased. It's the first time that in my years, I think even before that, that we're self-off. But Chris is, as you know, is an enthusiastic, talented, you know, energetic leader. And he's introduced some great ideas, like this week is the Super Bowl partying. You know, he's had a couple other ones, but from an operational point of view, he's been responsive to concerns. But, you know, we're very pleased, and the reports from parents and students have been favorable, but here are three parents that can talk to you from a parent point of view.
My son says the food's better.
Good. Bottom line. Yeah, bottom line, and his friends, good.
Eventually, our conversations in the car, the school lunches are better this year.
Good.
Good to hear.
Unified response, yeah.
Good, good to hear. We've had good luck with Chris and has kept our numbers back in the black. I mean, we were in the red for a number of years, and our operating budget, we were hemorrhaging money with, you know, chart wells prior to bringing Chris on board, so it's been much better, so that's good. And we will be meeting Joe, I know, and Kim and Mariana and Chris, I think, coming up, or April, I think we said, or maybe earlier. Maybe it was March. There's a time, we have a timeline in the contract, as in, we're going to come back together and start talking about, you know, next year, so. We've got to loop back around on that.
All right, well, we're at.
We're grateful to have this opportunity to partner with you, and so far, very good.
Good.
Excellent.
That's good. So you're all minus doubling the cost for these years, that's. We're giving you, we're giving you reconciliation of 51,000, so we've got to balance it out.
They can roll it into that.
Does anybody have any future agenda items that they want to talk about? That want to be added? No? I don't know? No?
Nope.
Okay. All right. Well, we're unable to take any actions. I mean, I'm grateful for the, the meeting, but how does this work? Are we going to have to?
No, we're just done.
Well, yeah, we, we'll have to loop back around, either hold another meeting or wait until, traditionally, May is the next. And we, we didn't have one last May, but we, we should definitely make sure we have one in May.
In May.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing would be then in May, assuming the Salem Board actually shows up. We can, we'd have to approve the minutes, and then also the mods to the.
That's right.
Co-op.
Exactly.
And the tuition.
And tuition.
Right, and, right, pretty much everything, yes. Would it be better if, I mean, I'm willing to go to Salem, is that something that would work maybe better? I don't know. In an effort to get everybody there.
I'm not sure that that's the, the driver, but, I mean, you're welcome to come up to Salem, anybody is, at any time, so.
Why don't we, we'll, we'll talk about that and see about next.
We have a date in the calendar.
Do we have a May date?
What do we have, Joe?
We do, I just don't know what's on the top of my head. Co-op meeting the 18th of May. I tried to reach my executive assistant to see if we could get to the members, but she didn't have her list at home, and I didn't have it with me, so. I only knew of two people not coming, so I did expect the forum.
So we're going to keep that, right?
Well, we might have to adjust that.
Okay.
We might, yes, yeah. We've got a couple of big things occurring here that evening. Or if we did have it here, we're going to have to, we'll have to talk, we're going to have to talk about that.
Would you be amenable to coming here?
Uh, yeah.
You're asking the wrong crowd.
That's right, Jen. Yeah.
So you're saying, Jeff, we could keep it at six here, as long as it was here?
Well.
Then you could have the six other meetings later.
The only, that's the issue, we've got a big art expo out here at 6 o'clock. And we also have a public community speaker coming in on social, emotional, mental health and wellness, who's speaking that night at 6 o'clock as well in the auditorium. That's the only issue.
And tomorrow night at 6:30?
Yes, different speaker tomorrow night at 6:30, yes, so.
Here.